I could stand up and make this next introduction, but if I could ask Counselor Petro for introductions,[7.02][7.02]int please.
Thank you. So through the chair, I'd like to welcome Leona to come up and give us an update on the Smart Cities Challenge, please.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and Council. Today, I'm pleased to provide Council with an update on our Smart Cities Challenge Comprehensive Proposal Submission. And I'd just like to invite my co-lead on the project, Dave Jackson, to join me at the presentation table, and then we will have a little presentation for you. So once again, good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and Council. Attached to the Council report is a complete copy of the, of Airdrie's Smart Cities Challenge main submission. Our presentation today will touch on some of the highlights of our proposal. We will start with a heartfelt expression of thanks for the folks involved in this initiative, and briefly speak about the vision for the project, provide a brief overview of the technology we are proposing, and how we are going to measure progress, and how we will engage all residents. We'll spend a little bit of time just outlining what's next in the process at the conclusion of the presentation. Firstly, I'd like to offer, on behalf of Dave and myself, a very, very, very heartfelt thank you to our Smart Cities Challenge management team members. And just as I call out their names, if I can get everyone who's in the audience here to stand, I would just like for them to be recognized. We all spent a lot of time, effort, and brought our varied expertise together over the last eight months to make Airdrie's innovative and bold proposal possible. So we have Carol, Dave Jackson, my co-lead, Dave Rossen, sure, you stand, Jay Stout, Jill Iverson, of course, myself as co-lead, Lucy, Mark Seeland, Sharon, Shelley Wyman, and Stacy Lush. Without -- I can truly say that without any one of these individuals, we would not have been able to put together the proposal that we did. In addition, we'd like to extend a big thank you to the members of our Smart Cities Challenge Advisory Board. Those members are Mayor Brown, Counselor Chapman, Dawn Bell, Mark Seeland, and Paul Schultz. Your critical questioning and push for an easy-to-understand explanation of the technology solution and how it would benefit residents truly helped us when we were drafting the script for the video and the vision section of the submission. Just before we preview the video, I wanted to thank all of our video stars, as well as some local businesses and locations that graciously offered us their spaces in order for us to complete the video. I will just, we've got many of them in the audience today, when I call your name, if you're in the audience, if you could please just stand so that everyone can see you in person, and then we're going to watch the video. I do apologize ahead of time for any mispronunciations on the names. We have Darlene Strachey, Doug Eslegur, Fred and Keon Chaney, Fred is with the Communications, Chloe Jorgensen, Sharon and Aldwin, Kai Suzuki, Damola Hodunu, Denithi Mudalish, Cole McCracken, Jordan Hudson, Shelby James, Morgan Cox, Owen and Nate Broshu, Ally and Mason South, Ruby and Nixon Iverson, Jill Iverson's children, Erin Murray from Communications, Rhonda Roscoe and her son Spencer, of course, Rhonda's from Building Inspections, Felix and Lee from our Planning Department, Amanda Liebert from Assessment, and Janelle Wobroch from Communications. In addition, we had a number of organizations that allowed us to use their space for this video. McKee Homes, Airdrie Transit, Genesis Place, Abe's Diner, Save On Foods in Kingsview, and Heron's Crossing School. So thank you very much to all of our video stars.
Just if I could, if I could interject there as well, on behalf, on behalf of Council and Mayor Brown, thanks, you guys. If, if things don't work out in your professions you have now, I watched the video, it's pretty good, you know. You could get into acting. Thank you very much.
And Carrie, if I could just get you to click on the graphic there in the middle, just once, it'll start the video.
Welcome to Airdrie, a city of over 68,000 people, one of the fastest-growing communities in Canada. We have a small-town lifestyle with big-city amenities. We are a diverse community with an innovative spirit. We are a city that is focused on becoming Canada's healthiest community and building a technology to help get us there. Healthsmart Airdrie, a personalized, health-based digital technology built for Airdrie and area residents. Every Airdrie resident will be able to sign up through their MyAirdrie account, tell us a little about themselves, their health-related goals, and how they want to stay connected. Based on the person's unique profile, Healthsmart Airdrie will connect them with community partners to offer them secured, private, and customized health-related information. Anytime, anywhere. Like Brandon, his goal is to include more vegetables in his family's meals and do it on a budget, but he's not sure how. Healthsmart Airdrie can connect him to local resources, like businesses with recipe ideas, cooking classes, and budgeting advice from his local bank.
Good job making dinner today, man.
You too.
And it can help Sam. She is having trouble at school and is looking for ways to manage her stress. Healthsmart Airdrie can connect her to local professionals for guidance, find after-school educational supports, and show her local groups she can join. Dawn and Marg are looking to teach people how to play their favorite game.
Yay! Look at that!
Healthsmart Airdrie can connect them with area residents that are looking to learn how to play, send reminders about the date and time for when games are scheduled, and ensure they have a ride to get there.
Hey, yeah!
Healthsmart Airdrie isn't only for residents. It can also support local businesses and social agencies with information and data to develop programs and services to help meet their clients' needs.
So great to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
They can also use Healthsmart Airdrie to support people like the Chan family, who are new to Canada. Healthsmart Airdrie can connect them to local community services like doctors, schools, and recreation programs in Airdrie. Healthsmart Airdrie's focus is to use technology to ensure healthy choices are easier for residents to make. How will it work? Right now, most health-related information sits on different technology platforms that don't connect to each other. A person needs to conduct multiple searches or access multiple platforms to find the information they are looking for. Healthsmart Airdrie is a technology that will bring this information together in one place. Residents can choose what information they connect to, what gets shared, and access the programs and resources to meet their specific needs.
Thanks for doing that today.
You're welcome.
Healthsmart Airdrie will also help businesses and social agencies connect to each other's information to better plan, develop, and offer services to meet their clients' needs. Airdrie residents have told us, health is important. This is why we're working to become a Blue Zones community, an approach that designs all aspects of a community to give residents easy access to healthy choices. The City of Airdrie and the Airdrie and Area Health Cooperative have partnered together to build the Healthsmart technology, but we can't do it alone. We're working to build partnerships with community and government organizations and local businesses to connect resources in one place.
Hello, welcome to the party. It's good to see you.
And we need the involvement of our community. Our plan is to help build connections to support our residents in living longer, healthier lives by focusing on what is important to them and working together to become Canada's healthiest community.
So just before we move on, I just wanted to let everybody know that our video has been viewed more than 662 times. The proposal which was attached to the Council agenda has been viewed almost 200 times, and it does not include any views originating, originating from inside the City of Airdrie. So we've got people looking at our proposal. We also received letters of support for our submission from the Premier, Minister of Economic Development and Trade, Darren Billis, Deputy Premier and Health Minister Sarah Hoffman, of course, the Airdrie and Area Health Cooperative, who is our partner in this initiative, and Alberta Blue Cross. So as you all know, Airdrie has a very big challenge statement, and it is to become Canada's healthiest community. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Chapman, for wearing your t-shirt today, and my co-lead, Dave Jackson, his mind's on the seat over there. But to become the healthiest community by engaging and securing the participation of all in our community, to really create a community healthy culture that improves social, economic, physical, and healthcare environments and individual characteristics and behaviors, so that healthy life expectancy, and this is the most important part of it, healthy life expectancy is increased by three-plus years over five years. We know this is big, and it's innovative. No other municipality, region, or province in Canada has attempted to navigate the complex issues around health. The conversation usually focuses on healthcare, such as funding and access to services. Airdrie's Smart Cities Challenge proposal, along with the Airdrie and Area Health Cooperative's other initiatives, Blue Zones, the broader, the broader digital strategy, and the Health Park, is going to change the status quo in our country. All will work towards helping our residents make better, more informed choices about all aspects that make up a healthy individual and healthy families, and collectively, we all will help Airdrie to become Canada's healthiest community. To meet our big challenge statement, we need to create an environment where people can easily choose to make the healthy choice. To increase healthy life expectancy by three-plus years over five years, we need the participation of all Airdrie residents. We will speak to how we are going to do this in more detail in a few minutes. We also need to create a baseline and continue to measure wellbeing, health outcomes, and ultimately improved resource use. Monitoring results on an annual basis will provide feedback on successes in areas that we still need to improve on. This information will be used to drive the ongoing community engagement required to increase overall community health and ultimately increase overall healthy life expectancy. Late last week, all of you on Council received an invitation, and we'd also like to extend it to everyone here today, to provide us with, to provide Healthsmart Airdrie with a short explanation or even a small video outlining what each of you would do with three-plus extra years at your prime. We're really looking forward to seeing your responses and sharing them with our community on the Healthsmart website. Basic principles of the Smart Cities Challenge competition was to create a technology solution that addresses a community need. The technology solution needs to be transformative, scalable, and replicable. Finalist municipalities were tasked with ensuring that their technology solution meets all three of these principles. You'll see these principles woven through the whole entire comprehensive proposal. Our proposal is one of the most innovative of all the finalists across all award categories. Municipalities are generally responsible for providing a healthy environment for the residents to live, work, and play. Our unique partnership between the City of Airdrie and the Airdrie and Area Health Cooperative allows us to go well beyond the norms for municipalities in terms of influencing a healthy living environment. By creating a health-focused movement aided by a tech solution, we will create an environment where people can easily access the information, resources, and people that they need to address areas of challenges for themselves and their family. You saw that in the video. That is what makes our proposal transformative. We will be able to develop an approach that can be shared with other municipalities of all sizes, all locations, even the most remote, northern, and isolated communities, and the incredible diversity in Canada's largest cities. Improved health, increased connectivity, and longer, more vital lifestyles are outcomes all communities are working to achieve.
So lots of big things that we've talked about, and it's exciting. So part of this is getting the technology to be able to do what we've asked it to do. And the challenge was not just the technology itself, figuring out the technology, but how does that technology fit into this broader health movement? Not only that, but how does this technology fit into the broader, like what Leona had talked about, that can be replicated across different communities and not put a burden on the municipals themselves or individuals. So we came up with what we called the Community Operating System, an operating system for each community. What we looked at is we, and I won't, I can go into a whole bunch of technical details, and I can cause everybody in the room, I have a superpower to make everyone's eyes gloss. I could do that, but I won't do that today. We, we looked at different technologies, one of them being blockchain and open source. The idea with the open source is it's something that can be owned by the community, something that we have the ability to manipulate and to utilize to the needs that we have. And so when we look at the Community Operating System, it's something that's open source, that it's COS community, it's customized for our community, something that we can customize specifically for Airdrie. But in another community, they can take that same technology, customize it for themselves. Then we wanted to create something that can be shared, and that creates innovation, ability to innovate. So when we talk about the ability we saw in the video, which was fantastic, by the way, and great job to everyone who was involved, there's so many different situations and use cases that you can use. But in, in order to view those things, whether it be to know what you need to buy at the grocery store, or whether to have study habits, you need information and data. And that information comes from a wide variety, from a wide variety of different sources. So we want to create something called a data exchange, or it's application programming interface, or an API. The idea there is that you can share information. It's a handshake between different systems to say, I have this information, you have this information, let's share, so we can start to answer some of those questions. Then the last thing we wanted to do is we wanted to say, well, how do we incite innovation? How do we empower those systems that are already in place? We don't want to redo something that's already in place. So we created a modular approach. So if there's a system out there that is already doing something pretty cool, or if we have a local entrepreneur that has an idea or an organization, they can plug and be part of this community operating system. So it all works together to create community from a technology perspective. I should know how to use a clicker, right? There it is, okay. I love this diagram. Thanks to Jill and Jolene for putting this one together. But the idea is, at the bottom, you have an individual, it could be an organization, it could be anyone. The idea is that everyone's going to have different needs and different data that they're going to have to have access to. What this solution is doing is getting the information to the right person at the right place at the right time. All right, so what is available to other communities? I'm going to keep going back to the video, I love the video, that was a good job. Each of those videos, each of the different stories is, stories of ways that people have different needs, and they have different things that they have to have access to. We talked about, even in the bottom-left corner, Darlene, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so Darlene and, I apologize, I don't remember your name. I don't know if I'm being too informal. Sorry, what's your name again?
Doug.
Doug, great job. So Darlene and Doug, they had this games night that they're putting together. How do you find the right people to do that? That involves connecting data. What we found is over the consultations that we did with the Co-op over the last couple of years, and over the last eight to 10 months with this project, is that when people, one, is we don't actually understand what it takes to be healthy. We often equate health with the time we're spending with our doctor, but health is more than that. But we don't know. And when we want to be healthy, we don't know how to access it, or who's around us to help us with that, or what information we need. What this is going to do is through what we call a smart service inventory, is it's going to power, have information that's going to provide that information to people as they need it. Whether it be connecting for a games night, whether it be for helping for studies, whether it be for new couples coming into the community, it's providing that smart information to connect and to create connections within our community and building a stronger community. Once we connect everybody, we want dashboards to say, well, how well are we doing? We can't just say, when we talk to people about saying, becoming Canada's healthiest community, what does that mean? How do we measure it? So we want to put together health dashboards. So through the information that will be coming through the Community Operating System, we'll be able to put health dashboards, which will be local information to help us to say, how are we doing today, progress indicator today, and then over time to see how well we're doing. And so these are dashboards that could be at an individual level, secure to every individual, an organization, community as a whole, so we can start to measure progress. And then they've got the Community Operating System, which is the utility. It's the utility that's enabling this flow of information. It's a secure information exchange. So when we talk about what's available to other communities, it's the customizability, and all these things we talk about here is that we're going to do it in Airdrie, we're going to show how it can be done, the value that can be provided, and then we'll be able to replicate that to other communities, and they can look to, to Airdrie as a leader and as a guide for, for future development and work together on that. So we talked about social determinants of health. Big diagram right up here. Definition from the World Health Organization says that social determinants are the conditions in which people are born, grow, work, live, and age, and the wider set of forces and systems shaping the conditions of daily life. When we think about health, as I mentioned before, a lot of us think it's the time we spend with our physicians and our doctors and when we're sick. Canadian Medical Association, this is the infographic we're seeing here. I think it was in 2015, they did a study. The time we spend with our healthcare providers, it's about 25% of our health. So the other 75% is up to us and things that we can control. And so, pretty dense infographic here. What we had is, is through this project, we were able to kind of break that down to eight social determinants, or say, eight factors. And if you go to the Healthsmart website, there's a description on each one of these, and it's a really clear description. The idea now being is that if we start to understand what are those factors that affect our health around us, then we can actually start taking action on us. It's not just a matter of saying, I have to be more active, or I have to go to the gym. Those are all fantastic things. But if we start to understand that, hey, my health is affected about who I'm hanging out with, am I taking time to spend time with my family and my friends? It's affected by how well I'm doing in my job, or my financial, or my homes. Once you start to understand those things, it starts to affect our actions and what we're doing towards our health. And so, part of that is the information that we're bringing, and as we understand that, we understand that the effects, they're going to vary by every individual, by every organization, and as the community as a whole. So each one of us have the ability to use that information specific to ourself. To make a change, it can't be this generic approach to say, everybody, here's how we do it. We have to have the information that allows each one of us to say, okay, this is how I, Dave, need to be healthy, and now I have the information that allows me to do that. That's how we truly affect change. How do we measure it? We've talked a lot about the Blue Zones, and the different Blue Zones. We've talked about how through Blue Zones, we're able to create a culture of health and to make the healthy choice the easy choice. Well, the other thing that we haven't talked a lot about is that through Blue Zones, there's a few different pieces. When we talk about the customizing and the individualization of things, is that Blue Zones has something called a certification process or a pledge, that citizens can take a pledge, work sites can take a pledge, schools, restaurants, grocery stores, and that community can all take pledges. The idea there is there's a checklist now to say, here's some things to do, and from each one perspective of personalization, say, here's how I am taking the pledge to be healthy. So you start to create that customizability and empowerment of each of those organizations. The other thing that we get through Blue Zones, which is pretty neat, is when we talk about the outcomes we're trying to achieve, is we're trying to achieve improved wellness and improved health outcomes, improved resource use. Blue Zones in the US have put together algorithms and mechanisms to actually measure that, to show that you are affecting change, that we can make a difference in health, and that can affect our overall budgets and all those different pieces. So as they come in, we're able to measure the change that we're making. Right now, it's been in the US, and part of what we're doing is we're working with local partners, the University of Calgary, Alberta Health Services, and Blue Cross, to understand, how do we make this into a Canadian approach? It's been done in 42 communities in the US. Airdrie's going to be the first one in Canada. So we have the huge opportunity to be, to do something new and brand-new, and to find a way to measure health using proven outcomes that have been done in the US. So through Alberta Health Services and the University of Calgary, they're helping us to find policies, what policies are required, what can be done, looking at different community initiatives. And then with Blue Cross, they've been working and spent a lot of time, they're one of the ones who have provided a letter of support, putting together a tool that you can imagine, that you can ma, measure, oh, I didn't do that in the microphone, did it?
You did.
I did. And it's recorded, you're welcome.
(laughing)
Focus. So, thank you. But imagine if you have this tool from Blue Cross that everyone could go in, whether you're an individual organization, you could get a health score. So here's how I'm doing today. Dave, you have a, this isn't my score, but here's your score today. And then with that health score, it's telling you, okay, based on your score, here's different areas that we suggest that you focus on. Spend some more time with your family, spend a little bit more time doing this. Here's some different areas that you can change your diet. So it helps to individualize everyone's health plan to be healthier. And with our technology solution, getting that information when we need it, where it needs to be.
So one of the big pieces of our challenge statement was to engage all here in Airdrie. So in order for this to be successful, we really have to gain community buy-in. There's two different types of community buy-in here. One is on health through engagement on Blue Zones. It will be the most comprehensive community engagement Airdrie has experienced. It is scheduled to begin later this year with an eight-month discovery process to plan Airdrie-specific engagement. The process will be led by locally hired facilitators. Following the discovery process, there will be two years of structured engagement with residents, not-for-profits, and our business community. The outcome is creating a community focused on healthy living, where the easy choice is the healthy choice. The second part of the community buy-in is for the technology through a separate but coordinated public engagement process, focusing on the development of and public understanding of the community operating system and the corresponding user-friendly dashboard. This coordinated approach will allow for simultaneous engagement to occur related to technology development, Blue Zones, and other initiatives focused on overall community health and the social determinants of health. So now that the proposal's in, and we've all taken a little bit of a breather from Smart Cities, on Friday, we found out what our next steps are. They were just confirmed by the federal government. We know that from today until May the 14th, we have an extensive social media campaign being run by Jill and Jolene, our communications contractor. On April the 10th, Airdrie will be the finalist spotlight. So over a period of 20 working days, the federal government is dedicating one day to each one of the finalists. So our day is April the 10th, we'll be promoting that. On April the 20, or between April 25th and May the 1st, we will receive some questions regarding our proposal from the jury. We have that week, that's, that's seven days, six days, to answer, in brief, we've been told, in brief, answer the jury's questions about our proposal. And we know that on May 14th, a group of us will be in Ottawa. In the morning, Dave Jackson and myself, as the co-leads, will be attending a session that is aimed at finalists, just what worked, what didn't work, how could the federal government supported us better, moving forward, what resources could be made available through the federal government or other public and private partners to help municipalities be successful in their finalist, during the finalist process. In the afternoon, we're being hosted at the National Arts Center, and there, there will be a trade show-like event set up for each one of the municipalities to showcase their, their proposal, their, their tech solution, and what they're doing in their community. Each one of us will be provided with an opportunity to complete a five-minute presentation that will be livestreamed. And then just after 4:00 PM Ottawa time, the minister and possibly the Prime Minister will make the finalist announcement. There will also be livestreaming the finalist announcement, so we'll make some arrangements for both of those to be shown here in Airdrie, and that is midday Airdrie. So it isn't even after work, and we're not competing with the supper time hour. So I guess we'd just like to say thank you and ask for any questions.
Thank you, Leona and Dave. Questions from Council. Counselor Coulson?
Thank you. So through the chair, just for some clarification, when you say people can sign up through the MyAirdrie account, is it going to be the same app, or is it going to be two different apps? So would, would MyAirdrie have its own area, and then you would sign up under that and be directed strictly to the Smart Cities app?
So we can have Dave answer, and we also have, the Smart Cities team is here to help answer any of the questions in their areas of expertise also.
Yeah, the idea is that we didn't, we want to make sure that there's a single place that people can go to, that it's not confusing to have a bunch of different places. So what would happen is they'd be able to go to the MyAirdrie portal, log in, and then right within the MyAirdrie portal, they'd have access to information that you need within there.
Okay, so through the chair, under the MyAirdrie portal, you would have business license permits, pet licenses, and healthy recipes?
Oh, so the--
Doctors.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So the idea would be, in the same way that you have a dropdown for your business licenses in different areas, you would have a Healthsmart dashboard, or the Smart Service Inventory. And one of two things can happen, and we still have to figure out the details, the nuances of it, is that, one, it would be either a dropdown where you have a portal to show, or it'd be a redirect, similar to what happens when you do the, when you're registering for courses through, or classes through the Recreation Center.
Okay.
Where it's open, a new window that opens.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Petro?
Thank you. So through the chair, thank you so much for the work you gave. This was such a thorough, comprehensive submission. Sorry, you guys are amazing. It was, it was really well put together. I got so much information out of there, because I've always had a few questions, because, I mean, obviously, you guys are still developing it, and we didn't get all the answers, but I got so many out of here, was able to-- I got so many out of here, was able to explain it all to my husband last night when he was asking questions. I felt a little bit smarter, which was great. I always have concerns about the, like the kiosks, like any, any kind of digital stuff that's out in the community, you know, just with not, unsecured Wi-Fi access and history on browsers and stealing the iPads in the kiosks. So, I'm hoping that throughout this process, you guys can ease those concerns for me. But other than that, thank you so much, I look forward to May 14th.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't have a question per se. Well, I do have one. April 10th, the finalist spotlight. Are they coming here? Is there a team that's coming to Erdry to see us, or what's happening that day?
So, what's happening on that day is they collected video footage when we were down for our jury check-in in the fall. They have our video, and then the communications folks with Infrastructure Canada have built a whole story around each municipality. That includes even their visit when they were here on December the 6th for our municipality. So, they've created a whole story for us. We have not seen that, and we will not see that until, until it's Erdry's Day in the Spotlight. But it's an opportunity for us to really share that in our community, and Infrastructure Canada is putting quite a bit of resources into ensuring that all of the national media outlets, the local and regional media outlets, know that it is our Spotlight Day. So, they're not coming to visit us, but they are doing just a whole bunch of social media reach-out and posting on, hosting and posting on their website and their social media accounts.
And so, on that day, that video will be made public? That, the public can see it as well?
Yes. What Infrastructure Canada's putting together, we'll all see that day at the same time. Our own video is public, our own submission video, along with the other 19 finalists' submission videos are all public now.
Perfect, thank you very much. And I just have to share a quick, it's sort of a humorous story, I found it sort of funny. Myself, Counselor Haig, and Leona were in Halifax last year when Prime Minister Trudeau announced that we were finalists for this. And we were sort of instructed to get seats right up front. So, earlier bright and early, we're in the second row, and we had these t-shirts under our chairs, and we were not going to pull the t-shirts on until the Prime Minister started speaking about Smart Cities. Earlier in that meeting, there was a protester that came down the aisle, and security escorted her out fairly quickly. While the Prime Minister starts speaking, and we reached under these chairs to pull on these t-shirts. While security was looking at us pretty close until I realized what it was. I thought we were going to get tackled, but it turned out very well. Thank you very much, wonderful presentation, I look forward to it. And I think maybe we should set up a viewing party here for that finalist, that'll only be 2:00 in the afternoon. I think we could find a way to get it set up in here for, for staff and council if they wanted to see it, I think it'd be very exciting. Thank you. Motion to accept, please.
Thank you. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Smart Cities Challenge update for information, please.
Motion's on the floor. Any questions to the motion? None, all is in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on.